Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The first item on the agenda is the Employee of the Month, and I'll turn that over to our City Manager, Doug Robertson.
Mr. Mayor, I will read this little paragraph here as you head down to hand out the award. This month, we actually have two, and as the Council will recall, I was about a month behind because of some other priorities. And luckily, in this case, there's two employees who are deserving. The first one is Guillermo Memo Barajas. Guillermo Memo, as we know him, and Jose Arcala, who's actually on vacation this week, so he's not here, but we'll get him his certificate when he returns. Memo noticed the V, the big Victorville V, in Old Town had some graffiti on it, and he researched to find out that it was in fact owned by the city, and so they removed the graffiti, but it just wasn't good enough for him. The pride in his city was too great, and he wanted to do a little bit more. So he, on a couple of weekends on his own time, along with Mr. Arcala assisting him, scraped over 40 years of paint off of the V, pulled all the weeds around the V, and repainted it all so that it once again is displaying proudly in our city. And for those things, and just generally their good work in the Engineering Traffic Control Division, I'm very honored to award the Employee of the Month to Memo, Guillermo Barajas. Come on, Doug.
(APPLAUSE).
Memo?
(LAUGHING) Careful there, Mayor.
Well, I mean, hold on, because I went to school at Arizona State, and every time we played University of Arizona, this type of stuff would go on where they'd paint over the A in Arizona. So maybe it's kind of the same type of thing, but you cleaned it up, so talk about that.
Well, first, I want to say thank you for making me Citizen of the Year. Oh, yeah.
I warned you, Mayor. I warned you.
Just kidding. No, you know what? It was something I've always wanted to put my hands on, to say, you know, I painted it. I grew up in Victorville, born and raised downtown, so it was something I've always wanted to do. To be able to put my hands on a historical point of interest sign, you know, a landmark, it's even better. But I don't know, to be recognized for it, words can't even explain. I appreciate all this. Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
This, this is your letter and certificate from Griner. You get Platinum Detail Service.
Yeah, we thought you'd get a Platinum Detail and also a day off. We're still working on that, so. Unfortunately, your day off was today, and you didn't know, so.
Thank you guys very much.
Oh, boy, Doug's giving raises without our concession. What's going on? All right, we'll now move into public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Council on our public comment? All right, see no one, we do have closed session, and I'll turn over to our City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. We have five items listed on the agenda. However, I only need to brief you on three of the items, Items Two, Three, and Five, and would request that we pull Items Four and Six. The items are all pertaining to existing litigation under Government Code 5495-6.9A. The names of the parties and the case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is any reportable action, we will come back and report that either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding the seven o'clock meeting.
All right, we'll now move into closed session. Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, we will have any announcements out of closed session, and I'll defer to our City Attorney on that.
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. We had five items agendized. We only needed to go into closed session on Items Two, Three, and Five on the agenda, and at this point, there is no reportable action with respect to those items. They were all existing litigation. Name of the cases and the parties are all set forth on the agenda.
All right, at this point, we will move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be led by Pastor Dane Davis from First Christian Church, and Pledge of Allegiance by our Victorville Police Department Police Chief, Captain Don Yoder.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you bow in prayer? Father God, we thank you so much that we live in this great nation, the United States of America, where we still hold proudly that motto, "In God we Trust." And so, Lord, from the federal level all the way down here to the local level, we want to trust in you. We want to lean on you this evening. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for our City Council, all the city staff members that are part of this great city. And, Lord, we know these have been trying times for our nation and certainly for the City of Victorville. So we ask, Lord, that you would give an extra measure of wisdom and guidance and discernment to our leaders tonight. I pray, oh, God, that you'd give them courage to stand up for what is good and right and true. And we do not presume to have all of the answers and the solutions in our own minds, Lord. We need your help. So we ask for your guidance this evening. And I thank you, Lord, for the spirit of humility that sets in this agenda each and every meeting to have this invocation, to invoke your presence and your blessing. And I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
(APPLAUSE). All right, at this time, I'll have our City Clerk present the agenda to the Council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the Council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the Council Chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the City Council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the City Clerk for anyone who wishes to address the City Council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-4.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and sub the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the Council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the Council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at tonight's meeting are before the Council. There is only one revision to tonight's agenda, and that is a request by staff to continue Public Hearing Items Number 14 and 17 after taking any public testimony. The request is being made in order to have a full Council present for this item. Those are all the revisions I have, Mayor McCracken.
All right, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. I do have a few cards here. The first one is Dr. Miriam Foltz.
To the esteemed members of the Victorville City Council, my name is Dr. Miriam Foltz, and an accident occurred today that hits close to home. As you may have heard, three children, ages six, 10, and 13, were struck by a car as they went acrosswalk at the La Mesa and Sundown intersection this morning shortly after 7:00 a.m. The intersection is near two schools, Mountain View Montessori Charter School and Liberty Elementary School. Mountain View is co-located on the Liberty campus and is closer to this intersection where the incident occurred. The three children suffered major injuries. I pray for their survival and speedy recovery. Also, my thoughts are with their parents and family, and to think that this morning the parents sent their kids off to school for breakfast, and now their lives are forever changed. The financial consequences are likely to be astronomical in terms of their care and recovery. Why am I here, you might ask? I'm a parent of two students attending Mountain View Montessori Charter School. Since our first day on the campus, I could see that the La Mesa-Sundown intersection was dangerous. There are no stop signs, and people are in a hurry to get into town or to the freeway. They are not looking for little people in the street. I can't tell you how many times I've remarked to other parents, it will take a death or something serious before anything is done. Sadly, my prediction came true today. I myself stopped crossing the intersection, the street, about four years ago. What have I done or what have other schools done to improve the safety of this intersection? Personally, I have waved to drivers and talked to parents. The reaction is usually hostile. I have brought the issue to the attention of our school. As a school, the Advisory Committee of Mountain View has contacted the city during the last few years. Only recently have we had any success. A city official recently came and observed the traffic issues in action, sadly too late for the three children. Our school has erected signs by the exit of the circle near our school instructing drivers to turn only right. Sadly, they are ignored. I personally know of one parent at our school has repeatedly contacted the City of Victorville and the County Sheriff's Office to inform them of the situation. What are the solutions, as no quick and easy fix exists? Among others, here are some ideas. Put a stoplight at the La Mesa-Sundown intersection, or how about a sign that lights up when the buttons are pushed. Second, institute a permanent plan. Have law enforcement at these two schools each and every day giving tickets and warning people. There are two other schools within a mile radius that need the support as well. Our school personnel should not have to serve as law enforcement personnel. Third, repaint the curb rev. On the right side is one heads west down La Mesa right toward the La Mesa-Sundown intersection. I consistently observe parents parking in this fire safety zone to pick up their kids in the morning and at night. I also see parents double park there, leaving their car in the lane to pick up their kids. Fourth, conduct a comprehensive study of the traffic patterns and safety zones around each and every school in the area. And finally, round all of this work in a collaboration between the Victorville City Council, the Victorville Elementary and Secondary School Districts and their schools, the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Office, the Victorville Departments of Transportation Safety, and, as important, the citizens of Victorville who live in and around this area. The citizens have waited long enough. I respectfully request your immediate and concrete action on this issue in order to ensure the safety of our children and their citizens. Our babies deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, and although it's not normal for the Council to respond, I think it's appropriate that I do say this. We will, because my daughter goes to school at Discovery right down the street, and I was deeply concerned this morning when I got that email about those three children. So I think that there's not one of us up here that would not care about that, and so we will ask our city engineer and city staff to look into this, and we will make sure that the public knows what we're going to do about it, because it's a huge problem, and obviously that was proven today. So we will definitely look into it.
Mayor, I was wondering if we could get staff to evaluate all the schools for traffic safety?
Well, I think definitely that's something that we can look at. I just, I wanted to respond specifically to this particular situation today, but I think that's definitely something we can look at, and I'll ask our City Manager maybe...
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, and members of the public, I had a good conversation with the superintendent for Victor Elementary School District. We've always had a good relationship with that district in particular, with all the districts, but especially with that district. And we've committed to working together on the engineering work that's necessary to study specifically that intersection and any other high-propensity intersections such as that. It is an issue around all of our schools. Unfortunately, the state tends to pit schools and cities against each other, because schools don't have to get any approval as to their location and traffic plans and things from the city. So in this instance, we do have a very good relationship with that district, so we'll be taking a look at that one. And also, there's another similar situation at Mojave Vista School that you and I discussed briefly, and we're committed to doing that engineering work necessary to study those things.
Thank you. Again, I guess the point is that we're going to be looking at this. There's all kinds of reasons, not just because my daughter goes to Discovery. We've got schools throughout the district that have these issues, and so our city engineer, Sean McGlade, who you just got the card of, is going to be the lead on that, so.
And my two daughters go to school at two different schools just down the road from that school as well, and I'm frightened when I'm asked to drop them off, because I see just absolutely crazy behavior from parents who, once their kids are dropped off, well, you better not be in their way as they're trying to get to work on time. So as important as it is for us to study this from an engineering standpoint, I would just ask that all the parents that are there, remember that there's other parents and other students there, too, that you need to keep all of their safety in mind.
All right, the next card I have is Paul Chacey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Staff. My name is Paul Chacey. I'm with the California Route 66 Museum, and tonight I brought a little prop over here to your left. Before I explain why I brought that, I'll tell you a little short story, and this just happened today. Today is Tuesday, and normally a museum is closed on Tuesdays. Recently, we have been promoted, we are open by appointment if we get some advance notice. But we were closed today, but we got a call to have some of our board members or volunteers interview with National Public Radio, NPR, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, you were instrumental in getting that interview. We thank you very much for that. So anyway, we had an 11:00 meeting, and three volunteers went over there and welcomed Gloria from NPR Radio, and doors were closed. And as usual, even if the doors close, the signs are up, or somebody will come knocking the door. We're trying to keep the place quiet, because she's doing a radio interview, and we were all kind of being really quiet, walking around. But anyway, we were able to get, a couple did get in, and they were from West Virginia, retired couple. Anyway, the interview continued without any much problem, and then Gloria went away, I believe, to meet you out in the desert there, and getting ready to close the doors. And unfortunately, unfortunately, I guess, it's typical on days where clothes, people start coming in, even though they don't see the signs out. So we started letting them in, got a few people in, and end of the day, we had about 30 people. Half of them were international. We had people from Southern California, West Virginia, as I mentioned earlier, Oregon, Orange County, Bakersfield, then New Zealand, UK, Brazil, all on a day that we're not normally open, and even if they look at our website, they know we're closed and only open by appointment. One quick sideline, West Virginia couple, retired couple, it's their second trip on Route 66, and they were so thrilled that we opened up for them, especially, in fact, they got interviewed on NPR, too, so it's something to tell the folks back home. But when they finished their tour, the gentleman came over to me, and he said, you know, he says, "Traveling Route 66 is like standing still in time." And then you could see the tears coming to his eyes, and then he said, "This is a dream." And I looked at him, and I said, "You just realized your dream. We're on Route 66." And anyway, they went on their way. We headed off to lunch at the Hollenberger, came back to pick up our cars, and when we pulled in the lot, I wouldn't say the lot was full, but there were three cars, three or four cars sitting in the lot. Just people sitting there, I don't know what they were waiting for. I guess they knew we were out to lunch. I don't know what the story was. But anyway, they were sitting there, so we had to open up the doors and let everybody in, and we locked the doors behind us on days like that. But it's kind of funny, it'll be entertaining, one group from England, and I looked at the door, and there's seven Brazilians with their smiling faces peeking in the door trying to get in. So we opened up the door, and we had a lot of fun. So, anyway, that gets me to why we have that road sign over here. What do these, you know, 25 or 30 people, excuse me, 25 or 30 people all have in common? Well, they want to drive Route 66, and if they're lucky enough, they'll stop at the museum. So this marker, this tiny marker, which I believe you saw here a couple of months ago when we were promoting International Festival here in Victorville. And I think a few weeks ago, I was addressing the Council about Route 66, and I had asked, has the Council approved to have that marker installed on Route 66 in Victorville? And I thought I'd get a follow-up response, but I didn't. Now, I know that since Barstow and Needles have both approved, their City Council both approved the installation, and in fact, I believe Barstow has already been installed. Needles, they're about to install them, and all the rest of the county, you'll see them going up. In fact, if you come down 15, you'll see several of these signs right on the off-ramp to Route 66, D Street. So I guess my question is to you, when is the City Council going to approve this? And I've also been authorized by the board at the museum, if there's a question of funding, then the museum will secure funding to make sure that these signs get up on Route 66 before the International Festival. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as we say, we don't respond, but Paul, I have to respond on this one. I had the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity last week to spend five days in Augusta, Georgia to watch the Masters Golf Tournament. I am absolutely confident that I was the only person on that golf course that wore a Route 66 hat all four days. And I had people stop me and ask me about my Route 66 hat where I lived. I said, "Victorville," and you probably don't know this, but we are the home of the world-famous Route 66 Museum. I got some promises to come visit it. I just thought I would let you know that. Thank you.
If we get this, are we moving on this item, this for the logo for Victorville, or is there something that this Council needs to do, by the way, since it's on the agenda? He's speaking, we might as well bring it up now.
We don't have it on the agenda at this point. We will be putting it on a future agenda item.
Well, if you need us...
Let's do it.
Tee it up. I'll tee it up.
I don't think we need an action by the Council for that, no.
So it will be on the future.
Thank you very much.
Ruth LaFortune?
Councilmembers and Mayor, I have questions about this train to Las Vegas. I want to know why anyone would fight the traffic down in Orange County or LA to come up here. They've already fought the traffic for two hours down there, and by the time they get up here, the traffic has fended out considerably. And then they would have to park their cars up here, unload all their luggage, put it on a train, and buy tickets on that train to Las Vegas, and they haven't decided yet what the cost will be for that. But it's only 180 miles from here to Las Vegas, and meantime, their car is sitting in the middle of the desert and probably being vandalized by gang bangers, which there's been a lot of that going on around here lately. And who's going to pay for the security for the cars that are left in this parking lot? Not the Sheriff's Department, because they don't have the money, and not the City of Victorville, because they don't have the money. And how much is this fiasco going to cost the taxpayers of Victorville? Who's going to pay to have the restaurants, hotels, shops built that the mayor envisions? If he thinks that the people of Victorville will pay for this, he is sadly mistaken. We are paying for big ideas that have put Victor... We are paying for big ideas that have put Victorville in debt for the next 40 to 50 years or so. And it's Buck Johns or Inland Energy in any way connected to getting this bullet train financed. I cannot see anything positive about this bullet train, and I think it ought to be voted down. Thank you.
Just, no, no, no.
I need to make a statement. First of all, madam, the bullet train is not a taxpayer item that we vote on. It is a privately funded.
Oh, no, no, no. Hold on. You had your, you had your chance.
It is a privately funded loan from the Federal Rail Authority to people that have escrowed $3 billion of their own money into it. This is not anything to do with the federal, no, I'm speaking, because I'm speaking firsthand. I've been associated with this train for many years now. Everything is approved now, with the exception of just the final clearance on the bonding from the Federal Rail Authority into the project itself. Everything else is done. The environmentals are done, the route is done. And by the way, the thing that I'm amazed about the most is that here's a private group of people building a $5 billion project from Las Vegas to Victorville, and then they want to go from Victorville to Palmdale on their own dime and attract the business there. And the state of California can't even tee up their little titty bit of taxpayer money that they have put up and anchor it into Palmdale over there and make a train station. What a wonderful idea for that $8 billion. Wouldn't get much off of Palmdale, but the fact is that it would tee the project up in a nice anchor point way over there. This is an incredible project that will benefit all of Southern California, and it is private money. It is not, what the state does, I'm not, I agree with you, but what these people are doing is on their own dime, and they're putting their own serious money onto it. So, this is an incredible project. It's estimated to be over 50,000 jobs over a five-year construction period. City of Victorville will get about 1,000 employee, permanent employees into the station and the maintenance department area. So, I am campaigning on that train. I'm hoping that they put the shovel in the ground well before we even have the November election, so you can see the project get up and running. But whether the shovel's in the ground before November or not, the project is coming, and it's almost done. Ready to go.
No, you need to come forward. I can't, we can't hear you.
So far, most all of the trains have been funded by the federal government. And who pays for that? We do, the taxpayers. Your Amtrak is paid for subsidized, excuse me, not paid for. And they have been subsidized for years. And this one, trying to get the federal, it would be subsidized by the taxpayers.
You're, wait, one more thing. I mean, what you're saying, all the things you're saying are perfectly legitimate and right and proper, and concerns are happening. But this project is a standalone, unique, ma'am, let me tell you something. You're not listening to me. You're just saying no and not paying attention. This project is one of a kind. It has never been done in this country before. It's the very first high-speed rail, interstate high-speed rail in the whole country. It is done on private money. They've been working on it for seven years, and the money is coming out of the Federal Rail Authority. They have a basket of money, a lot more than the project, this project is, that they will allocate only to projects that qualify through a whole strenuous list of checkpoints. They've met them all. They're good to go. This is not Amtrak, this is not the high-speed rail back east, this is not California's high-speed rail, which you constantly hear about, which I think is a joke. This is a real project, and it has a real potential to do everything that we want in Southern California. I'm proud of it.
I think both of you can agree to disagree on this issue.
But not a penny of our taxpayer money is going into this?
Okay, all right.
No, you can't promise that.
I think you can both agree to disagree on this issue, but we need to move on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council people and staff. First of all, I want to thank you for the presentation you did two weeks ago in regard to the upgrades and the redevelopment that you had done in the Old Town. I'd like to know if that presentation is available, so we can go ahead and possibly do it at a committee meeting. The next thing I'd like to discuss would be that the museum, as Paul mentioned, were probably one of the best secrets that we have here in Victorville. We are getting better. Visitors coming in, I won't say, I shouldn't say better. We're getting more visitors coming in, more international visitors coming in. And I think that basically, Victorville could probably help us and keep some of the money here in Victorville if we could. The last thing I want to discuss with you is the festival for Route 66 is going to be at the fairgrounds. We just signed the contract, and we're looking forward to just absolutely having a wonderful time in August. We will also, hopefully, be able to use some of the city resources, not money, resources, in helping us make this one of the best events ever. So, I want to thank you all for your attention. And if you don't get that presentation for me, please.
We will make sure you get it.
Thank you.
My name is Clarence Jeter, and I appreciate you welcoming here to speak before the city council. My problem is same, the lady that was just spoke on it, the crosswalk on La Mesa and Sundown Road. I live two houses off the corner of La Mesa on Sundown Road. It's my belief that we are in need of some kind of light there to protect our children when they're crossing that street. One day, it might be my grandchildren, or maybe my mother or somebody's loved one crossing that street one day, and they might not make it. That street's very bad, sometimes at night. I hear people racing down that street sometime. And I'm quite sure our law enforcement there during the day, the city was growing, I know that they're being spread thinly. They can be everywhere at one time, but some type of light would be, some form of deterrent from people speeding between our little space there where the school is at. Every school that I've noticed in this city, for every corner, every corner that school is on, there's some kind of red light or some stop sign. That school, within 50 feet of that corner there, there should be some kind of stop sign there for our children. Just 50 feet. And what happens, it shouldn't have happened, but it did, but that there, this water under the bridge, the children, thank God that none of them, they were killed or anything. But if the city council approved this, this would make it safer for our children in that area where I live at. Thank you.
I think that there's not one of us up here that is not sad about the situation that occurred today. And I think I would like to repeat that we will do everything in our power to make sure that this type of situation does not occur again. But let me make this clear. I mean, my daughter goes to Discovery right down the street from where this occurred. And I was deeply concerned this morning about what happened, because it was so close to where my daughter goes to school. But I've got the same complaints coming to me, I'm sure other council members do as well, about what goes on on Ridgecrest near Endeavor. And I think our city manager has spoken to our superintendent about other school locations. So, this is a problem citywide, and we are going to look at this, we are going to address it. This is not about one location or one school. It's about all schools in the city of Victorville. And I think we've got to be concerned about children's safety, no matter what, citywide. But with that, I just wanted to reconfirm that this city council is 100%, unless you all want to tell me I'm wrong, behind looking at this issue and making sure that we solve the problems. Raymond Herrera?
It might take just a little bit more than three minutes, because I want to talk about the Liberty School thing, with your permission. This morning, my daughter dropped off my grandkids at Liberty and ran into that accident. And I just want to mention to you, Mayor, and to the city council, that the same incident happened down in the city of Montclair. My associate and I went and spoke with the mayor, went spoke with the police chief. We found out that the driver was an illegal alien plowed through the crosswalk and injured three little, you know, students or whatever. And it was because of Robin and I that we had an ordinance made up, you know, implemented in the city of Montclair, where if you're an unlicensed illegal alien driver uninsured, your car gets impounded. And I just want to say to the people that can hear me, that these people that are out there driving, when you think about your wives and your children, they can't read the signs. They don't know the laws, and they don't know the interactions of, you know, American drivers. You know, so, I mean, I don't know what caused it at Liberty, but if I was the police department, I'd definitely look into the status of any driver in my streets, especially at what school this morning, because it may have been an illegal alien driver who doesn't know the speed limit, doesn't know about our children. But there is an ordinance in the city of Montclair, courtesy of Raymond and Robin. But, okay, so I'm here, Raymond Herrera, president and founder of We the People California's Crusader, and I'm here to speak to you about two different items. Versus Cinco de Mayo, and this is to everybody that can hear me. Americans of Mexican descent do not identify with Cinco de Mayo, Caesar Chavez, Latinos or Hispanics. That's you people. And it's done so by you people because it's put forward by intellectuals, government officials, media and journalists, societal control points. I only ask that you stop celebrating such falsehoods. If you want to celebrate America, you want to celebrate us. We don't need any of this tribal impetus being put out there. And I try, you know, as you know, I resent the city of Victorville sponsoring, helping, aiding, and abetting, you know, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce here. There's several reasons once corrupt organizations, under investigation, and may or may not under investigation. But furthermore, it desecrates our American culture. It's based on falsehood, and it has nothing to do with anything that we deal with. And in the past, Mayor, you have said, and the city council has told me, that no city funds, no expenditures, you know, services or anything's ever used to aid and abet criminals such as, you know, the CEO, Ms. Cabradas, that runs that and always comes up with more money after the event. But I happen to know that the signs for the event were stored at the public's works yard, city property. You know, we provide storage for these people. I also happen to know the city trucks that drove the signs out there and installed them on the city property, posts, poles. And I think that's wrong. You don't do that for any other organization. And I think there's a lot of political collusion that begins with Rudy Cabradas. And I also resent the fact that this body politic puts any kind of value on Hispanic or Latino votes, so much that they betray the American public by bending over backwards and storing their signs and using city properties to promote an event that's just completely a falsehood. Trust me when I tell you, you're looking at an American of Mexican descent, and, you know, like I said the last time, it's an embarrassment that a great picker, you know, has chosen to, you know, represent my contributions to this great nation. But even more so than that, it, you know, we have to stop, you know, helping these people desecrate us.
My name's Robin Fidston, and I'm also with We the People. And I also agree with Mr. Herrera. We oppose that this city, this US city, is sponsoring a Mexican holiday, Cinco de Mayo, at a public institution, Victor Valley College. This is a tax-funded college. And we're very upset that the city is using public works, trucks, hardware, staff to support this Cinco de Mayo event, this Mexican holiday. We have seen the collusion between the city and the corrupt Hispanic High Desert Chamber of Commerce, and we're outraged that it continues to go forward. Here tonight, we'd like to see this, this seal is now on the Cinco de Mayo signs all over Victorville. We'd like to see that seal on this Route 66 event. Or instead of putting all the energy and time, and we're going to say tax dollars, into sponsoring Cinco de Mayo, how about you would have been down at the school and putting up a proper light and focusing on that issue rather than Cinco de Mayo? Mr. Herrera and I, we also study the Mexican drug cartels, which is a global menace. So, when we see the city celebrating Mexico, that's just another layer that we're appalled by. We have met with the border sheriffs, those are the Texas-Arizona sheriffs on the border. And Texas border sheriff Larry Dever has said, "Mexico is a narco-terrorist state." Both Mexico and the United States media do not report on the carnage that is currently going forward in Mexico. We get what's called the Mexican drug blog, straight out of Mexico, written in Mexico with photos. And in Mexico, reporters can't put their names on an article, they will be hunted down and executed. We got information from the Mexican blog that in Nuevo León, Mexico, where a reporter, she didn't write an article, but she started to blog with her name about the truth of the Mexican drug cartels. She was tortured and hung from a freeway overpass. And the blog that we follow, no one knows who is the author of this blog, but Al Jazeera, that's the media out of the Middle East, they do study it, our media doesn't. And they said, "It's a Mexican college student that is in charge of this blog, and he would be subject to execution if they found out who he was." Just this week, we got articles, and I put them in a packet for you, where there were five police that were executed by the drug cartels, several multiple beheadings, mutilations, torture. And I put photos in your packet with warnings, if you don't want to see them. But we are also told that the Mexican cartels, this is the Department of Justice, and I have the article here, they say that the Mexican cartels are operating in over 1,000 US cities. And we followed the Department of Justice and the ICE websites. There have been Mexican cartel busts just recently in North Carolina, 50 Mexican cartel members running an ID ring. St. Louis, that was busted for a Mexican drug cartel. Just this week, Florida. And then here in our own area, Redlands just had a big heroin bust. This is the Mexican cartels operating on US soil. So, we ask the question, why is a US city, why is Victorville, why have you got your logo celebrating Cinco de Mayo, a Mexican holiday? You should be putting your resources, the public works staff, to making our schools safe and helping an organization like the Route 66 program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name's Maya Rajia. I'm the one that was interviewed on the news about the incident outside of Liberty. My son attends Montessori. I thank you for your empathy, and it's truly appreciated, as well as yours. But we're not here to concentrate on issues of all the American, I'm Italian and Irish. Every one of us came from somewhere else. The issue that should be concentrated on is one that we have spoke about over and over tonight. The empathy is greatly appreciated, but I have made complaints since the moment I lived here in Victorville, and that was over six years ago, long before my nephew attended Montessori, much longer than before my son started last year at Montessori. I've seen this problem as a resident of those streets in fear for not only your children, not only my children, long before, like I said, they even walked those streets, in fear for my daughter, who's almost 18, even driving on those streets. And again, like I said, thank you for your empathy. I understand the racial and the nationality issues.
Good job.
That's correct. However, it's not anything to do with those, and I greatly appreciate their empathy, trying to bring their points across to you. But the major issue should be, like I said, about what's happened. what's happened. I understand it happens in many of the schools in our district. I'm an environmental assessor, I'm a minister, I own three companies, I have looked into it myself. Other than this one intersection, there are stop signs, there are flashing lights as far as school zones are considered, even on hook for our high schools, for kids who drive. This area is the one area that we have COPO, we have Discovery, we have Montessori, we have Liberty. On the other side, we have Silverado and the other high schools that are down there. But within a mile radius, there are more than six schools that are impacted by this one intersection, this one crosswalk. I understand that we have a light at La Mesa and Amethyst. It is too cost inefficient, if you will, to put another light so far down. I've been begging for a stop sign. I call for a police presence, we have it for three days, and then they do the same thing, they disappear. I understand your point as city council, as mayor, as city engineer, but as I say, this one crosswalk has been a major, major issue because Amethyst is so close to Bear Valley. La Mesa doesn't go through to 395. Luna does now, La Mesa will eventually, but in the six years I've lived here, we haven't got any rectification whatsoever. I'm the parent that Dr. Foltz has mentioned, that she talked to, that said it's quite inevitable, it's a time bomb, and unfortunately, today was the day that one went off. I don't want to see it happen to another child. I myself have almost been hit more than four times in that crosswalk. Not only that crosswalk, but the streets adjacent to that crosswalk. Even when we were out there this morning, this afternoon, everybody, they'll slow down for a second, they speed right through. Something has to be done. The empathy's great, the sentiment's great, it's time to now do something after this long. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That is all the public comments, but again, I'd like to reiterate, my daughter goes to school right down the street. If you don't think anything's going to be done at this point, I would hope that our city manager, our chief of police, and everyone else, our city engineer, gets the point at this time, because, you know, it shouldn't just be about my daughter and where she goes to school, it should be about all schools. And that's what I hope it ultimately becomes. But I was greatly concerned when I saw that this morning, and so we will be looking at this, we will be addressing this, not just there, but at every school throughout the district. And I know our city manager has a great working relationship, as I do, with our school superintendent, Dale Marsden, and hopefully we can get a meeting with him soon so that we can actually address just not that school, but all schools throughout the district. So I guess my point is, is that we hear you, and we're sorry for what happened today, but we will address it. With that, I do not have any other public comment cards, so we'll move into our other agenda items. We have the library board of trustees, we have a consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabrera absent.
There were no items at the time of posting for the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, agenda item number 10. This is a request to approve the execution of amendment number one to the standard sublease agreement by and between Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the Boeing Company for Building 685C.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabrera absent.
Good work, Mr. Metzler, and you're out there at the airport again. It's an excellent contract for us going forward. But I would just remind you, all the airports making about $2.5 million a year this year and growing each year, so I just thought I'd mention that.
On agenda item number 11, I'm going to defer to our city attorney. We are without a mayor pro tem, and I cannot vote on this item, so what is your point?
I'm going to appoint one of the other council members to handle this item, and excuse yourself.
All right, I'll have Councilmember Rothschild handle this item.
It's number 14? Oh, 11, excuse me. Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, this is a request approval of the authorization amendment number one, consultant professional services provider agreement between the Bradco Companies and the Successor Agency of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, extending the terms of the agreement. It's served us well to this point, so I'd encourage the council to move on that one.
I have a question. Doug, could you explain this item to me?
I shall have Mr. Metzler explain this one, this is one of his.
Yes, Councilwoman Vias and members of the council, this item is an item to retain brokerage services, to dispose of real property, undeveloped property, that were owned in the redevelopment agency's name and now are subject to dissolution. Before the dissolution process and the elimination of the redevelopment, these properties, in fact, three properties were identified specifically as properties not needed immediately to further some of the redevelopment and were looked upon as properties that could be used to bring cash into the coffers. Of course, when the dissolution occurred, that concept didn't change of liquidating the properties, with the exception of one, which is the five acre parcel that we've identified. We're currently working on a transaction that was at least procured, not using the brokerage service from Bradco. Notwithstanding that, this is a professional service that had actually gone through public bidding process just over a year ago. And with the dissolution occurring for the RDAs, we feel it's appropriate to continue on with those services just under the different entity name of the successor entity.
Oh, so it's the same contract?
Same contract, just extending the term and striking one piece of property that was otherwise contemplated in the previous contract.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor McAcorin and Mayor Pro Tim Cabrera absent.
All right, moving on to agenda item number 12. This is a request to approve and ratify amendment number three to the general services provider standard services agreement between Wilson and Company and the Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency to oversee emergency repairs for the agency's railroad track located at Foxborough Industrial Park.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabrera absent.
All right, agenda item number 13, which is under the Joint Powers Financing Authority and also companion to city council item number 21. This is a request to approve the third amendment to the lease agreement dated May 1, 2007, between the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority and the city of Victorville to authorize certain cell tower uses and subleases in Mojave Vista Park and Fire Station number
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabrera absent.
Under the Victorville Water District, agenda item number 14 and companion item, city council item number 17, are being requested for a continuance.
That's correct, but I would request that you open the public hearing and then continue the public hearing. And the request for continuance is to the second, first meeting in May?
Second meeting in May, May 15.
We hope to have a full council present.
Okay. All right, so on agenda item number 14, under the Victorville Water District, and agenda item number 17, under the city council, we open the public hearing on those items. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time on either of those items. All right, seeing no one, we will go ahead and continue both agenda item number 14, under the Victorville Water District, and agenda item number 17, under the Victorville City Council, to--
May 15.
May 15, 2012. Moving on, we have agenda item number 15, a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against confirming the assessments for unpaid water fees as set forth in the This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 15. Anyone wishing to address the city council under that item. All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the city council.
I have a question. I noticed on here that some people are only like late $99, and then other people are late $1,300. How does it get so far out?
I'm trying to think of the best person to call up here. It could be Sean McGlade, our city engineer, it could be Del Moser, the assistant director of finance. A lot of it depends on the amount of the monthly bill, and then also the timing of-- we don't always bring these items forward. Additionally, some of the individuals involved, and I don't know specifically about any one of these, but some of the individuals involved may have come in and asked for a payment plan, in which case, staff gives them a payment plan, and so their bill can grow at that point. And if they ultimately don't fulfill the obligations of the payment plan, it can grow to a certain point such as this. But the time that it would come to the city council would be at the time, it's based on the dates more so than the dollars.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabrera absent.
Agenda item number 16 is request to approve additional appropriations to fund one-time payouts and an update to the actuarial study in the amount of $71,500 regarding the Victorville Water District employee benefits. Mr. Robertson, do you want to add anything?
I don't really have anything to add. This is an item that should have been taken care of about five years, well, not quite five years ago. For reasons unknown, it was not. And once it was identified to me earlier this fiscal year, we sent out an option to each of the employees who should have been given this option back in 2007, and ultimately seven of those employees and former employees chose to take the optional payout and switch over to the city benefits where applicable. And that's the main piece of this. The other small piece is to redo the actuarial study so that we can identify the current liability of the remaining employees in that program.
Doug, there is a funding issue here, I think, that does need to be addressed, and it's minor in this agenda item, but I was looking over the original resolution that the Water District approved just before we were merged for the city, and we estimated this liability, and in reading that document, which I might add, I signed because I was president of the Water District. And in that document, we said we were going to fund this estimated liability with asset acquisition funds.
Asset replacement funds.
Asset replacement funds. I just, I have to say, I don't believe, at the time we made that decision, and I can't remember focusing on that aspect of the resolution when we approved it, I don't think anybody in that meeting gave any thought to that provision in the resolution, that we would use asset replacement funds to fund a liability for post-employment benefits. And as I read it today, I'm no lawyer, but my guess is, that was an illegal decision. We had no authority to use those kinds of funds for that purpose. And I think we need to address this in some way. I don't think that decision can stand the way we made it.
Councilman Kennedy, I think illegal maybe is too strong a word for it.
It is illegal to me.
It is an issue that we will be addressing before bringing it back to the council. The problem that we ran into back in 2007 was that the estimate for this item was $5 million, was to be set aside in a trust fund. Ultimately, when the actuarial was done, it came back at not quite double that amount. So that caused the pause back then, and I've talked with a couple of people that were involved in this, and no one has any final resolution on where it ended up or why it ultimately sort of stopped or faded away, other than perhaps other priorities came up. But that issue is one that we will be addressing prior to bringing it back to the council. Ultimately, when it comes back to the council, sitting as the water board in this case, you will have a number of options. One would be to simply withdraw or repeal that resolution of the Water District, which would make the action go away, and these benefits would be funded on a pay-as-you-go basis, as happens with all of our employees. Or if in fact, the use of asset replacement funds is inappropriate, as you're suggesting, then you could identify other operational funds that could be used to fund that obligation if that's the choice of the district at the time.
I just find it concerning that, you know, this has been left so long without being tended to, and that disturbs me. And then also, I'm hearing that, and I wanted to see if it were true, that there was a lawsuit filed by current and former employees against the city regarding this issue?
We got notice of a lawsuit having been filed. We've sent that notice to the appropriate attorney firm to address it and bring it back to the council in closed session, assuming everything is in order with regard to the filing.
And I'm wondering, now that we know this information, and what Mr. Kennedy said, I would ask the legal counsel if it's appropriate that we do anything on this now, or do we need to reassess the situation and take Mr. Kennedy's comments into consideration?
I have not personally seen the lawsuit, I am aware of it. I don't believe that this action would impact upon that. It's filed by individuals that are not affected by this action right now, and so, and I wouldn't want the council members to engage in discussions regarding litigation at this point until we get more from labor council with respect to that item. I don't see a downside to taking this action. This is based on agreements with these employees to facilitate basically a settlement that the city manager previously negotiated, but not impact litigation in any way.
Let me follow up on that for a second. From her question, would we be doing this study, whether we had a lawsuit or not, we'd be doing this study anyway, wouldn't we?
We'd be doing the study in any case, yes.
By doing it, we're actually filling out some information that whether there was a lawsuit or not, I was concerned myself even about maybe prejudicing ourselves, oh, we're going to try to cover our fanny here before this lawsuit comes through ahead, but no, we would need this information anyway to make a decision, so it couldn't prejudice the city's position in any way. Is that where you see it?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about this action, I am concerned about the decision we made to fund what we estimated as a liability with funds that just shouldn't be used for that. That, that's the only thing I'm concerned about. I think that resolution we need to deal with as a council, I think.
And for clarity's sake, the, uh, the lawsuit is not pertaining specifically to these $10,000 payouts. Uh, it, it is pertaining to post-employment benefits of, uh, some of the affected employees, yeah.
Okay. Well, my concern is, is that I'm wondering if, that we even had the right to negotiate with them when they had this benefit. So I'm wondering if we're making a situation worse.
Right. Uh, the, the use of the word negotiate and the negotiation, um, is, is a bit of a misnomer. Uh, the LAFCO action, uh, and the employee transition plan that was approved by the City Council and, uh, incorporated into the LAFCO resolution, uh, required that we offer $10,000 to each of the 27 affected employees of the Water District at the time, uh, should they choose to, uh, switch from this more lucrative benefit that they had vested in over to the city's benefit, which is not as lucrative. Um, ultimately, uh, that benefit, that, that one-time payout was not offered, should have been, uh, at least four years ago. And, uh, that's why it was offered at this time. But it, it's not exactly a negotiation. Uh, it was simply, we were supposed to have offered this in late 2007. We're offering it now. Seven of them opted for it and, and this item would be to, to fund, uh, that, that, those seven payouts as well as the actuarial study, which would then reevaluate, uh, the amount of money needed, uh, in order to, uh, record this liability on the books of the Water District.
I'm just struggling because I'm well versed on, on, on this topic, um, from my, my employer, as well as reading the material and, and speaking to current and former employees, that I think that we, you, you, when you go in there and, and the way it was presented to the employees, I'm not so sure that it would be legal, the way it was done. I mean...
Well, as...
Under duress or, you know?
As Mr. Robertson suggested, this was basically an implementation of the LAFCO mandate that we do this four or five years, or three or four years ago.
Uh-huh.
It was never carried out. These people were offered that, um, certainly, and perhaps as, as, as before payments are made, they should be made aware of the, uh, of the lawsuit. I'm sure they will read about it and make their own decisions. But this was certainly not done under duress. They voluntarily agreed to this, uh, as taking what they believed to be a lucrative payment in, in lieu of, for, for whatever their circumstances are, uh, in lieu of, of getting the, the benefit plan that was offered to them.
So we're redoing the, the actuarial because now we have people that took it, so they shouldn't be included in the previous one that was done. Is that my understanding? And that would lower the liability? Is that what we're doing?
They, they would no longer be included in it because they, they opted out of this benefit. So yes, that would lower the liability, uh, on the books of the Water District.
Okay. And that's what I'm, I'm concerned about, is that in the end, they might, they might still be in it because they might still have that right because the way it was done, I think, was done improperly, is my concern. So we spend this money tonight, it might be wasted, is what I'm concerned about. And I think maybe a little more time...
Certainly, if, if, if the concern is that the people that would have agreed to or have agreed to this, maybe foregoing rights based on if there's any legitimacy to the claim, I could see that as being potentially a concern. If you wanted to wait, Doug, I don't know if there's a downside to waiting and delaying it till they see it. My initial read of the lawsuit is it doesn't have a lot of merit, notwithstanding that, you know, if you're concerned about people having made a decision and then finding out that other people are taking a different tactic, um, they certainly made these decisions voluntarily with full information at the time.
Yeah, my, my concern would be that, uh, there's no way of knowing how long it's going to take to sort out that lawsuit. Um, these folks, the seven that have, that have opted out of that benefit plan, uh, have been waiting now for, uh, over four years. Um, I, I, the, the, the two issues are, are similar. They're about the same topic, they're about the same subject, but I don't see them intertwined so much. I, I'm certain that, uh, those seven, uh, employees and former employees are aware, uh, that there has been talk about, uh, some, uh, consternation regarding this issue among the employees that were affected and, and as well as the retirees. Um, so I don't think it's a surprise to them that a, that a lawsuit was filed. Um, but, uh, I don't think that, uh, I would want to force them to wait even longer now, uh, after them, after they waited for well over four years, uh, for this item.
Yeah, and I, I, what we have to realize is this was an agreement that between LAFCO and the city, that the Water District advocated, that dealt with post-employment benefits. And that means after people left employment, what were the benefits going to be? And the city's plan, the Water District's plan were a little different. It's complicated. If we got a lawsuit, I don't think now's the time to be discussing those details. What this action does is it causes the city to take the action that it agreed to take four years ago when it took over the Water District. And, and we should do that. We should do that.
And so this isn't going to harm the employees? This is going to help them?
The, the seven, I think it is seven employees that are, have, I believe, opted with this with full knowledge, as, as, uh, Mr. Robertson indicated, that there was consternation amongst the others. Uh, perhaps before you finally cut the, cut the check to them in, in accordance with LAFCO, we can make them aware one more time that there's been a grievance filed and, and let them make that decision.
Well, I guess...
Well, I mean, I think to Councilmember Kennedy's comments, uh, we're teetering on a slippery slope here about con, talking about former employees or existing employees, whatever it may be, um, and their benefits. We shouldn't be doing this in an open session.
Well, we should not be discussing the lawsuit or the merits of the lawsuit in open dec, uh, in open session. This discussion in open session is, as, as Councilmember Kennedy pointed out, it is implementation of a program that we basically previously agreed to with LAFCO. We have offered it to seven employees, they've agreed to take it. That's all that should be discussed right now, and to do the actuarial study.
Okay. But my point is, is that we're getting way beyond that.
Yeah. And, and just for clarity, those, those, the seven employees who opted for it could have chosen like the other 20 employees and, and remained in their current plan. There was no, uh, there was no pressure one way or the other. It simply was an option that was to be given. We gave the option, albeit late, much too late, uh, and, and now we want to move forward.
Okay, so this item's before the council.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis absent.
All right, Agenda Item Number 17, we have continued. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Number 18, public hearing called to hear arguments for and against confirming assessments and proceedings for unpaid rubbish fees as set forth in Resolution 12-015. Uh, this is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 18. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Bogu Lane, I'm a local realtor. Um, the, the liens that are considering to be placed, front-paid water and trash and sewer, uh, sometimes those liens are being placed against owners who don't owe the, that don't owe the money. The bill was, or their charges were incurred and then the owners or the ownership of the house changed hands. And now the new owners are going to get a lien for a bill that's unpaid by some former owner. Does the City Council have some sort of solution or some waiver, some ability to waive those liens of the new owners who didn't incur the charges from a prior owner?
Mr. Mayor, we've worked with several realtors in the past, uh, when that issue has come up, if a lien is placed, uh, there's a very short window that that could happen, uh, that a lien is placed on actually the new owner rather than, uh, having it be a responsibility of the, of the previous owner. So, uh, if you have a specific instance in mind, I would encourage you to contact staff, uh, in our finance division and, uh, they can work with you on, on taking care of, of that issue to make sure that, uh, if there's a lien that's, uh, placed inappropriately on, on someone who's not responsible for it, we've, we've taken those off at a staff level. There's, it's not something that would need to come to the City Council.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, anyone else on Agenda Item Number 18? All right, seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the City Council for decision.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number 19 is a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the 2012 hot rubber cape seal project in the Golden Triangle area. I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 19. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council for decision.
I have a question. Um, on the staff rec, it says, uh, zero amount. And I was concerned, I mean, obviously it has to cost something to fix it, so...
This item is actually not the repair itself. Uh, it's not the Cape Seal Project. It's simply the, uh, SEQA exemption. Uh, these are existing streets, existing facilities, so, uh, it meets the definition of, uh, of, uh, existing conditions, existing facilities. So, um, there's no need for this to go to any kind of environmental assessment, and that's all the council is doing with this item, is, uh, adopting, uh, this mitigated negative declaration.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis absent.
All right, Agenda Item Number 20 is our consent calendar.
I'd like to, um, take out A.
All right, we'll pull, uh, Agenda Item Number 20A from the consent. The rest is for approval.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis absent.
I'd like to make a point that, um, we once again paid the city attorney $116,000.
All right, so we have Agenda Id, Item Number 20A for approval.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
We've already dealt with Agenda Item Number 21, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 22. This is a request to approve the 2012 Justice Assistance Grant Award Agreement, uh, the 2012 JAG Grant Expenditure Plan for the 2012 Burn Justice Assistance Grant, JAG Allocation, uh, or Code 2752109.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number 23, this is a request to adopt Resolution Number 12-017 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council, City Victorville Authorizing Examination of Sales, Use, and Transaction Tax Records."
Uh, Doug, question on this. Can, can you explain exactly, um, extent of these examinations are and who is being examined and who's doing the examining?
Um, the, uh, hinder, hinder lighter delomas companies would do the, uh, the examination. It's not, uh, on an individual business-by-business basis, such as an audit or something like that. They're actually looking at, uh, our, uh, sales and use taxes, uh, in the aggregate. Uh, they can, uh, break it down, uh, somewhat smaller chunks than that, um, using the data that, uh, they obtained from the Board of Equalization. Um, and, uh, they can share that with, uh, really it's only two individuals. Uh, one is myself and the other is, is our, our CFO. Um, it's not information that can be shared directly with the council, uh, you know, such as for individual businesses because that's proprietary information, uh, their exact tax receipts. Um, so what they do for us in this case, or what they will be doing for us, is, uh, studying our sales tax trends. Uh, we have done, uh, actually a very good job at a staff level, uh, on an annual basis of estimating our sales tax. Um, and, uh, what this will do will augment that work, uh, and look at it, mm, on an individual basis and on a group basis. As we have, uh, other, uh, businesses coming to town, such as the New Macy's, such as the J.C. Penney expanding, such as the Super Walmart being constructed in the Dunier Plaza and soon to start, uh, along 395, um, they've got data from, from other areas. They can look at our demographics, they can look at our, um, our, uh, surrounding, community surrounding stores and make, uh, very good estimates as to, uh, how that's going to affect our sales tax. Uh, and we just don't have the staff time to be able to do that, uh, or the expertise to be able to do that. Um, so what they would do is work essentially as an extension of our staff. Uh, they do all of this, uh, for, uh, $650 a month. Um, it's, uh, incredibly, uh, small dollar amount. In fact, it's so small that the item you're voting on tonight isn't even the contract. That's within my, uh, authority as the city manager, uh, to approve such a small contract. Uh, the item tonight is just to give them official authority, uh, on behalf of the city to, to be able to see and use that, that data for, for our behalf. Thank you.
So, 'cause I was noticing that one, again, that it said zero...
Right.
For fiscal impact, but yet if you look in the contract, it says $2,000 a quarter for 15 months, which would be $10,000, so...
Right.
But you're not asking us to approve the money?
No.
Just the service?
No, no. The, uh, the contract is just there for informational purposes only.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis absent.
Agenda Item Number 24 is request for direction from council as to follow-up action that have been or will be taken as a result of the March 13th, 2012 shooting incident that occurred in the Brentwood subdivision. Doug?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, rather than, uh, directing staff to, uh, prepare a report, um, I've asked actually, uh, three individuals to just address the council if, if it pleases the council. Uh, first I would ask, uh, Captain Yoder to come up and talk about, uh, what happens at the, uh, termination of one of these incidents as far as the Sheriff's Department is concerned. Uh, following him, actually Chris Porcherd is going to talk a little bit about, uh, the code enforcement activities that we undertook with regard to that, that house and the types of things that we would do in that type of an incident. And then following that will be Mr. Metzler to talk about the potential options that we may have available, uh, should that house come on the market.
Aaron, cancel. In reference to the incident that occurred on March 13th, unfortunately, it was the owner of the residence that, uh, contributed to us having to enter that residence. We did receive a court order to use whatever necessary force was to enter that residence to arrest the suspect. Unfortunately, he felt to comply with our commands over a four-hour period. We introduced, uh, gas into the residence. He still refused to come out. Uh, we used our hostage negotiating team. They again attempted to get the subject to come out and he again refused to come out. For public safety, we evacuated the surrounding homes, uh, and used whatever force that was necessary to enter the residence to remove the subject. Our after-action plans generally is our SWAT team leaves, we take over the residence, we conduct a search warrant, and it's then up to the homeowner, homeowner and their insurance companies for all repairs to the residences. companies for all repairs to the residences.
So any damage done to the house would normally fall under insurance coverage?
That's correct.
If they have a mortgage, they're going to have to be required to have homeowner insurance.
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, so with all that said, is the house still torn apart right now?
I do not know that. I've not driven by there. I know the city has made some repairs to the residence.
Okay.
Sorry, Chris, if you want to get up and talk about the code enforcement activities that we did on that residence?
Yes, after the resident complained before you that night, the next morning, code enforcement went out to the property, took pictures, and began the process of finding out the ownership of the property. They notified ownership through the lender, Bank of America, and also through the listed owners, who happened to be the two residents. They, property was verified secured on, that was this month, on April 2. That was, we began on March 21. So April 2, the property was verified that it had been secured from the inside, actually, the boards are on, bolted through the inside of the house, so that was done by the, either the bank or the owners. The broken common fence, which was run over by the tractor, has been removed, and the house was verified vacant at our last inspection on the 5th. They have another inspection due on the 20th. They'll verify the vacancy of the house, because the house isn't habitable right now. They would need to do quite a bit of work in order to make the house habitable again, so there is probably some permits and stuff they need to do in order to have that happen. So that's pretty much where we stand with that. If things aren't done, we can place liens and begin the work ourselves if we need to, but typically, we don't go that far in this situation.
Code enforcement would do the work to repair the house?
They could hire, they could hire a contractor to fix things aesthetically from the outside that would, or to secure the house.
And who pays for that?
We would put, the city would pay for it and put a lien against the property. And we could obtain that money on the next tax round, or depending on what type of lien it is.
We've never gone that far with, with an action such as this, with a house. We have done that in the case of maybe a fence or a block wall for, for a neighborhood or something like that. We've, we've done that, but never anything like this. That's just sort of the extreme that it could get to theoretically. We would assume that at some point, either the homeowner or the bank would effectuate the repairs themselves, and that's part of the process that does take some time to work through the courts. But that, that's what we attempt to do, is to get the homeowner or the bank to effectuate those repairs themselves.
This would not be the first time we've had something like this happen, so our normal process is to step in through the code enforcement process?
Yes, and this is the first time in a long time that this degree of damage has been done to a property.
If I remember correctly, that the neighbors came in and were complaining about how bad the neighborhood looked, and it was just really in bad shape, the house. It sounds like it, there's been some cleanup, but not really to the extent that the neighbors would want it. I was wondering if maybe we could use that neighborhood stabilization program and then wait for reimbursement or liens, so that we get it fixed right away, so it's just not such a blight in that area?
We, that Keith could answer that, I would certainly look into that area.
Do you have a copy of my plans for this evening's discussion? Actually, next, I was going to have Mr. Metzler address that, and that's the exact program that, we haven't, again, we haven't used that option, because we haven't had this type of incident occur in quite some time. But Mr. Metzler, if you could explain how that, that might be able to happen?
Doug, if you're done, let me, if, just to give you a little bit of information, I don't know if she made it very clear, but they actually busted out every window on the house to allow the tear grass to escape. There was smoke damage, there was, they tore out a piece of wall from, with a tractor, with a bulldozer-type thing to get into the house. So a lot of that damage has been boarded up and is, is cleaned up. A lot of the debris is picked up now, so it does look a little bit better from the first pictures that I saw to, to now, so there has been some improvement, but hopefully get better.
Yeah, and I've, I drive by that regularly. I'm a resident of that general area, and before the property became secure and boarded up, it was, it was pretty bad. Still looks pretty bad now. It's certainly noticeable that something substantial happened there. And one of the things that we're looking at, and, and the challenge is the time element. Certainly, we'd like to, to respond and deal with it tomorrow, but because we're dealing with private property rights and private property ownership issues, we are looking at the ownership very closely. We know the lender. In fact, we've worked with the lender extensively on a lot of projects, including using the NSP dollars. We do believe that's probably the best option for us to pursue. The property in question is in one of the identified targeted areas, so we certainly believe there's eligibility there to where if we can actually get ownership rights to the property, then we can certainly acquire using the NSP dollars, and then, of course, we have through that same program, the, the rehab dollars as well. So we're looking at that. We've heard as much that the property was going to go back to the bank, but we haven't confirmed that. But we'll continue to work with the lender, and to the extent there's an opportunity to acquire it, we'll bring it back to this council and pursue that action.
Not approving anything, are we?
No, it's just an informational item.
All right, agenda item number 25, I know that this was at the request of council member Rothschild, and I would like to request that we continue...
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just, just to finish this, because it was a resident of that neighborhood that came and, and voiced a complaint first to me, and I suggested they come to the council and speak, and they did. What is our mechanism for communicating back to those folks and people in that neighborhood what's happening, other than just picking up some trash?
They submitted a card two weeks ago, or maybe it was four weeks ago, I don't recall now. And we can, assuming we can identify who that person was based on the, of the video that's available and, and the card that was submitted, certainly, we can share that information.
But as well, other people in that neighborhood who I think would probably like to know as well.
I don't know if that's realistic.
I don't, I don't know of a mechanism off the top of my head that we have in place that could notify the residents of a, of a single neighborhood. We do have a few not very good options, I'll say, to notify, you know, all customers of the water district or, or sewer.
Maybe if the Daily Press is still here or looks at this in the morning, they'll give it some coverage in the newspaper.
They, they tend to, to, I believe, watch the video in the next morning. We don't get a reporter here at night anymore, but typically, they'll watch the video, I believe.
Hey, Brooke, when you're watching this video tomorrow, please give some coverage to this in the Daily Press, so the neighbors know what's happening. Thank you.
That's a first.
Okay, again, on agenda item number 25, I think this item was brought to us at the request of council member Rothschild, but I would prefer that we have a full council. I hope you're in concurrence with that.
No, that's, any time you're dealing with a policy council party.
Yes, so until we have a full council, which won't be until May 15, I believe, I would like to ask that we continue that item, so...
That's fine.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item number 26. This is council committee reports. I'll start with council member Vias.
We have our grand opening Friday at 11:00 a.m. at the Victor Valley Transit Authority, and we're also going to have Sandbag there.
Yeah, and I was just going to reiterate that. That's a big deal. Beautiful new facility, I mean, how mu, how much was spent on building that, or do you remember?
Well, that was before my time, so...
But I mean, it's a beautiful new facility that BBTA operates out of. It'll make that organization much more efficient, and Sandbag, Mountain Desert Committee is going to be meeting there that morning.
I also just like to put a little bug in your ears, is that we've been getting a lot of people coming in on Sunday regarding Sunday ridership for Victor Valley Transit Authority, and I don't know if you guys know that they don't have ridership, and a lot of people want to go to church, and they want to get jobs, and they can't get jobs because they're required to work on Sunday. A lot of people are very handicapped, and especially with this realignment program, a lot of people want to stay connected with their faith to help them stay out of prison. And there's no, they, they say there's no money for that, and each city has to come up with money. Well, I kept pushing Kevin Kane, the general manager, of like, how much money is he talking about from each city? And just a rough estimate off the top of his head, he came up with a figure of maybe $20,000 to $30,000 per entity to get that Sunday ridership for, for the people. So just thought I'd kind of mention that for the next time for budget, maybe we can start thinking about that.
I think Doug just heard you.
I, I did hear you, actually. I'm curious to see the, the, the new measure I dollars that BBTA gets versus the old measure I dollars.
It was like a million more. It was like a million more, so I was wondering, but I do know that we have roads that we need to, to keep up and, and fix. But if there's just any way we could do that for these people, it would be, it would be really a good thing. But I want to make sure, too, that Victorville just picks up their share, and we're not picking up anyone else's share, and Kevin has promised us that we are not going to pick up anyone else's share, that those other cities need to pick up their own.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, Doug, that's something you can look at as we come into the budget season.
Yeah, I'll talk to Kevin about it, yeah.
Definitely.
I've got a few concerns about it, to be honest, but certainly, I'll, I'll have a, a chat with Kevin about, about their needs.
Okay. Council member Rothschild?
Have none.
Okay. I already mentioned about the Mountain Desert Committee, so let's go to discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Council member Rothschild?
Have none.
And Vias?
Yeah, I have, and, and I think it might be in the works, I'm not sure, but I promised Cory Lopez that I would bring it up. If we can do an ordinance on banning synthetic drugs in the city of Victorville? And I have, she wanted me to present this to you?
Yes, and, thank you. And, and by the way, we exchanged emails today, her and I and Doug. It is our belief that on this issue, the only way you tackle it is valley-wide. Doug, I, I think you mentioned that in your email, because if you ban it in Victorville, what's to stop it from going over to Asperia? So unless we get all cities in the high desert to adopt these ordinances to ban it, it, it will absolutely have no effect, but I think that that's ultimately what we're working towards. Is that correct?
That is, yeah, I know. I think Adelanto has taken a bit of a lead on that. And actually, ultimately, I would recommend, and I will be when I meet with Cory, that she pursue some kind of state legislation to ban the substance and make it actually a criminal violation versus what would be essentially a civil violation. If we were to ban it in Victorville, it would put the burden on our already thin code enforcement staff to try to enforce, you know, this, this ban within the shops. So if it were a criminal activity to, to sell or to own or possess these dangerous chemicals, I think that's the ultimate solution, if we could encourage this community group to, to stay on the path that they're on now, but also focus on, on a statewide ban that would make it a penal code violation. That, I think, is the most effective. But I'm happy to, to meet with, with them and discuss, you know, how quickly we can get all of the municipalities in the valley on board with this, so that we can at least get it started right here in the high desert.
Okay, and if, if you don't mind me correcting you, I think our sheriff's department and here in the city has been working with Cory for some time, and I think we've been out ahead of this more than any other city. But I agree that it doesn't make any sense just for our city to adopt it. I think it has to be valley-wide, and I agree with you, statewide is the better, better option, but I want to give credit where credit is due. So I know, I think it's Jared Burns in your department has been working with Cory on drafting an ordinance, and hopefully, it's something that can be adopted throughout the high desert in the various cities and towns, so... But we are, we are...
Mr. Mayor, my intent with that was just trying to make it a valley-wide issue. I think that there's some political muscle needed to, to encourage, and maybe, maybe muscle's too strong a word, but I think Adelanto, I seem to recall an email today that indicated that Adelanto was kind of taking the lead on, on getting the other cities, city councils and town councils up to speed, not trying to slight our sheriff's department in any way.
I know. All right, we'll now go on to reports from staff and...
Oh, is it done?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Apologize.
Okay, I just have a couple more. And then also, I wanted to make sure that we did get it on the agenda, that we were going to evaluate the schools for the traffic safety. I know you had said that a few times, but I, I think this is the part where I did it.
Yes, I'm completely 100% in support of that. Can we make sure that we get that on a future agenda for us to look at?
And then also, I would like to, to know, because I, I hear from a lot of the constituents, a lot of concern over not just Sink of the Mile, but other events that we don't help or we do help, and why is that? If we could get like a spreadsheet of who we help and what costs, you know, so that it, because it does, it looks very unfair, you know? It looks like we are just helping Sink of the Mile, but I'm sure there's other things that we do for other organizations, but I would like to, if we could get a spreadsheet on that so that I, that the people know? Is that okay? Okay. And then, and then I had requested that, to agendize the RDA and how much money we spent in absorbing the RDA staff, which I got a memo saying that it was like a million dollars, but I wanted it on the agenda so we had an opportunity to talk about it and, and for transparency purposes, and it never got there, and instead, it got to a memo, so I'm wondering what happened?
Actually, that memo indicated that it was not an action for the city council, so I was giving you the information via memo, because I could get it to you much quicker than waiting until the agenda cycle came up. If the council would like it on the agenda, I'm not sure what the discussion points might be, but certainly, if that's the pleasure of the council, we can put that memo or the report on the agenda for, for whatever purpose that might serve.
Transparency.
It, it's a public document, but I, I'm not trying to argue the point. There, there's nothing...
Well, what I'm trying to say, Mayor, is that it was agreed it would be on the agenda, and then it doesn't get on the agenda. So that's my point, is that this council made an agreement that it would be on the agenda, and then it didn't get on the agenda.
And the memo actually indicated that if you wanted some further action, please let me know. If you'd have let me know that, it would have been on tonight's agenda.
So is, would you like, should we go ahead and put it on the next? Is that...
I'd be happy to.
Is that possible, considering the memo's already done?
Yeah, it's done. It's done. There's nothing, nothing to hide. It's a public document.
All right.
And then, just one other thing. Yeah, I would like to, to agendize if we can, because of all the corruption in San Bernardino County and the city, and just like we had a policy about closed session a while back, and, and phones in closed session. If we can get a policy on the agenda that says that, that we can't take campaign contributions from people that do business with the city, if the council would be willing to put that on the agenda? A policy of that.
Would you clarify that for me? I'm, I'll give you an example. Cooley Construction, they've been in this valley for as long as two generations or more. They give contributions throughout the Victor Valley and, and everything else, and that they put bids in for construction projects in every city in the county. Are you suggesting that we elevate some kind of a discussion or a policy that any local company ought not to be involved in any political process within the valley? I'm just trying to make it clear for Kevin.
Yeah, yeah, you know what, what I would like to do...
And I'm not pick, well, by the way, I don't want to pick on Cooley Construction, I just use them as an example.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I think what I'm trying to do here is, is, is make this council an example, and, and say that, you know, that, that we're not going to accept contributions from people that we do business with, so that the perception of that looks good, and that, and I'm hoping that that rubs off on other councils and, and other, other bodies, so that, you know, we can, we can start something and, and look better, you know, to the public, because right now, I, I don't, I, I don't think that Victorville looks, you know, good, is, because, you know, we're under investigation, and then with the whole San Bernardino County thing, and it just seems like this could be a start of something good.
Well, I, I think appropriately, as we have done in the past, we should agendize it. I look forward to that discussion, I guarantee you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to agendize it. I, I think it's just fraught with all kinds of problems. I, I'd have no clue how you'd ever police such a... I'd have no clue how you'd ever police such a thing. I have no idea how I'm going to know when I accept a campaign contribution, whether these people have some business connection to the city, but I'm willing to agendize it. I'm going to have a full discussion on it.
Sure, yeah, I agree.
I see problems, but...
I agree.
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, Doug, reports from staff and council members?
I've, no reports at this time.
Ms. Vias, anything else?
No, that's it.
The only thing I would like to add is, Associated Press did a story a couple of weeks ago on the Desert Express, and we heard from someone here in the audience today. I think it would be a problem for me as the mayor or the city council to sit here and say, "We don't want the Desert Express here in Victorville." It means tens of thousands of jobs. We have unemployment that's upwards of twenty to thirty percent, and I've got people coming to me saying, "Don't build a train." That's unbelievable. It doesn't make any sense that you are telling the residents of the Victor Valley that you don't want them to have jobs. So I will advocate for that train until it is built, which it will be built. They have everything that they need, and so I'm going to do everything that I have to, as the mayor of the city, to advocate for a train. You have your chance to speak. I'm speaking now. This is my chance to speak, okay? My point is, is this, tens of thousands of jobs will be created as a result of that train being built. And I think it's, I think it really creates a problem, when I have residents of my own city with unemployment rates at twenty to thirty percent coming to me and saying, "Don't build a project." Right down the road from here, we have Little Mason and Squally Interchange being built. Hundreds of jobs have been created as a result of that. Are you telling me that we shouldn't have built that either? I think that, at the end of the day, people need to go back to work in this country, and that is what I'm advocating, and that is what I will continue to advocate, and when it comes to Desert Express, that's why I advocate for that project. So I'm in favor of people going back to work in this country, not people staying at home, not people, not being able to put food on their table, and for people to come here, residents of this city, and tell me that I shouldn't put people back to work in my city is completely unbelievable, and I'm completely one-hundred percent against it. So I will continue to advocate for Desert Express, because it will be built, and I look forward to those tens of thousands of jobs that will be created. With that, we are adjourned.